Just invite the Chair briefly to welcome everyone and then I'll make the necessary housekeeping and technical checks. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our final planning committee of 2020. And we have very few items this morning. So hopefully it won't take as long as usual. Okay, over to you, Mike.
Thank you, Trish, much appreciated. Obviously colleagues, just in terms of the usual technical checks, I've confirmed the Chair's here and if colleagues can stay visible, thank you, Myrna, I'll just conduct a brief check. So councillor Conception, welcome. Just confirm your audio.
Thanks, Mike, yeah, I can see and hear you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you, I can see and hear you too.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Can hear you, Michael.
Brilliant. Councillor Hanson, welcome. Can you hear us okay, Joe? Brilliant, thank you. Nice and clear. And councillor Juarez?
Yes, yes, clear, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you and welcome to everyone. Moving swiftly onwards, in terms of today's meeting, in terms of the published agenda items, I need to advise that Agenda Item 5 relating to number 35, Timewold Hill in Tubicon Stony Croft Ward, has been withdrawn from consideration at the request of the Head of Planning. This took place prior to today's meeting. That application is anticipated to come forward in due course during the new year to a meeting committee as and when it is able to do so. So we're now down, as the Chair indicated, to three applications. In terms of apologies for absence, I've received formal apologies from councillor Kennedy on this occasion. Chair, you have any additional apologies?
No, I'm not, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Moving on, we now come to declarations of interest. Do members have any to declare, please? Thank you, councillor Thompson, if you'd like to unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, I need to declare an interest on item number four, please.
Just confirm the nature of your interest, Helen?
And I've had quite a bit of contact with the developers, I and my fellow councillors had quite a bit of contact with the developers, talking through various options, so yeah.
Okay, that's smashing. Would you like to actually address committee as well on the application later on or would you just stay quiet?
And yeah, I'll speak very, very briefly just in favour of the application.
Okay. Chair, in terms of speakers for obviously this item of business, we only have one speaker registered today and that is the architect and agent, Mr Demissianos. So if you bear with me briefly, I will go, I will get a presentation on screen to show images of the development so it's nice and clear for everyone and for the benefit of the agent. If you just indicate next slide once that is on screen. So that'll be coming up very shortly. Thank you, everyone.
So we're going on straight to Agenda Item 4.
Please, Chair. This will be coming on screen very shortly. Just waiting for teams to catch up. Apologies, everyone. As you can appreciate, we do have, on occasion, have technical difficulties and I'm just waiting for my computer to catch up with what we're actually asking it to do. So thank you for everyone's patience as I get everything in place. And just as the Chair's indicated, we'll be taking item 4 now, which relates to land bounded by Vancouver Road, Damson Road, Lowerst Close, Winnipeg Drive in Belvair Ward. That will now be coming on to screen now. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you. If Mr Demissianos would like to address us now, the application, thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you, Richard.
Great, perfect. Good morning. My name is Richard Demissianos. I'm a town planner at Prospect Homes, which is a subsidiary of the Riverside Group, who are the applicant for this planning application. I would like to read out a short statement in support of the proposals for the site and address any issues that might be raised. Firstly, to recap on the site specifics, the application site is located in Netherley and is owned by the Riverside Group. It comprises an area of cleared open land, which was formerly occupied by residential properties. The site borders with St Gregory's Church and St Gregory's Catholic Primary School. The surrounding area comprises terraced and semi-detached houses. The site is allocated in the UDP and emerging local plan as primarily residential policy H4, which states that planning permission will be granted for new housing development that satisfies other planned policies. For this site, consideration has also been given to policy OE11 Greenspace, which states that planning permission will be granted only if development can be accommodated without material harm to the recreational function of the Greenspace, its visual amenity, relationship with other Greenspaces and any nature conservation value. Next slide, please. In terms of the existing recreational function and character, the views from within the site are largely constrained by nearby residential housing and brick walls, which offer little natural surveillance, leading to security and safety issues. The large grass areas are unattractive and featureless with little interest. The visual amenity of the site is of poor quality with several hard standing areas left over from previous development. Visual links to other Greenspaces would not be impacted and in terms of nature conservation, the site has no designated conservation value. Next slide, please. The proposed development is for 31 new affordable houses comprising a mix of two, three and four bedroom houses and bungalows. Vehicular access will be of the existing roads. We have also ensured that the correct amount of parking has been provided. The proposals have been designed to provide an enhanced public open space, which will be overlooked by new development. Interface distances, sorry, have been considered and security of the development has been a major consideration to maximise natural surveillance by way of active street frontages. The houses will be built with grey, sorry, with red brick and grey roof tiles. Next slide, please. The landscape master plan includes the provision of 54 new trees, shrubs, rich grassland and existing trees will be retained where possible. Views have been retained and enhanced into the site. The paths within the open space have been designed to follow natural desire lines to improve the flow of movement. The proposals will result in a biodiversity net gain across the site of 99.45% habitat units, which is well in excess of the required 10%. An informal kickabout area has been included to the open space, which will be overlooked by the new residential properties. And four pieces of trim trail equipment will also be provided as further improvement to the recreational facilities. Bens will also be incorporated to allow people to relax and enjoy the open area. Therefore, to conclude, we consider that the proposal should be supported by the committee members as they will develop much needed affordable houses and are fully policy compliant. And it will improve the existing open space for local residents and will enhance biodiversity. I think that's it then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Richard. Are there any questions from members of the committee?
Councillor Juarez, I believe, Chair?
Councillor Juarez? Yes, good morning. And thank you for your presentation. I looked through the list of objections and it says here that on one sentence that says unaware of the public consultation event that was held prior to the planning application being submitted. Can I ask the applicant, what did they have an open day with local residents to show the plans of what's being proposed today?
Yes, so first of all, we had three meetings with a planning officer. Then we had a public consultation event in the youth centre just north of the site and we invited as many residents as we could. And then we had a second consultation, albeit we sent letters as we couldn't have a consultation due to coronavirus. And then obviously the council sent letters as well when we redesigned the scheme.
And how was the attendance on your consultation?
I would say 60 people attended the event on the day and I had a few phone calls as well.
Yeah. And what was the response like on that day? You know, people?
Yes, it was mostly positive, to be honest. The statement of community involvement was submitted with the application. So that shows all the evidence. If, I'm not sure if you've seen that, but it was fairly positive. I think people thought that the site was unused and there's a lot of unsocial behaviour in that particular part of the site. So they were quite happy to see some development in order to minimise ASV.
And also, it's quite impressive that you've thought about people's lifestyle with this planning application with regards to your layout of your open space and Greenspace is going to be beneficial to those local residents because I'm presuming, you know, it's young families and families who want to live here. You know, it's really, really impressive that you've thought about people's quality of life and mental health and, you know, children playing, which is quite important for everybody. You know, happy children means happy parents, you know, and children are occupied and learning about the outdoors. Your open space, now I have seen previously that, you know, applications have been passed in this committee where people come with like, you know, great offers of, you know, retaining a Greenspace, but then as soon as they get the application, two or three years later, they come back with, you know, what they would describe as Greenspace of, oh, can we build on that Greenspace? Are you going to protect this Greenspace from further development in the future?
Yeah, yes, of course. I mean, we will only be building an area shown on the layout. And of course, we have liaised with the planning officer for nearly a year and obviously it's quite clear that no further development will be taken part on that site. It's just the 30 units and the rest will be retained as open space and enhanced, obviously.
Okay. Thank you for your responses.
Right, I also heard a hand indicated by councillor Cummings, who we didn't check in at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm here.
Councillor Cummings, yeah. Would you like to ask your question?
Yes, okay. Before we start, you'll tie greetings to one and all. And with regard to what councillor Morris said, I fully concur with their issues. I just want to ask one more thing with regard to the consultation and the letters being sent out. Was there any visualisations of the planning within the letters?
And yes, yes, we did send the latest layout and we also directed people to the council's website to view the latest plans as well.
Right, that's good. So from my point of view, I don't have any issues with the plan at all. I'm very impressed with it. It's a massive positive intervention of the echoes of what was there before and I fully support this application.
Thank you, councillor Cummings. Now can I invite councillor Helen Thompson? To speak now, in this is her ward.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't have very much to add actually. In fact, I'm probably going to sound quite repetitive. And we, the councillors in this ward, had a lot of consultation with the developers and we feel like this is a good development. And they really listened to us about various things to do with layout and proximity and overlooking and those kinds of things. So they tweaked the initial development. And I can confirm that the consultation on the 17th of January was well attended. I'm really sorry if there are people who thought they should have been informed and weren't. It's a shame they didn't get the opportunity to comment as well. And people really engaged with the consultation. They had various comments similar to ours to do with layout and walls and proximity and overlooking and those kinds of things. I think the open space that we've got is not very inviting as Richard Demissianos mentioned. It's still got areas of hard standing from the flats that were there years ago. And people walk across it and they walk their dogs in the daytime. You would want to be quite careful in the evening about going across there because it's not overlooked. This will be, albeit a smaller piece of open space, much enhanced and crucially, it will be overlooked and we, and it will also provide some much needed housing. So, thank you.
Has anybody on the committee got any questions for Helen?
Don't appear to be any further questions, Chair.
I think councillor Cummings turns up, but I, oh, he's taking it now.
Councillor Thompson, if I may ask you to turn your camera off for the remainder of this item, if you could, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to, before I move to the vote, about planning biodiversity. I'm really impressed that this is going to be 99 and a half percent change. And once the legislation gets implemented, we're only asking for a 10% gain. So this is extremely encouraging. Councillor Thompson has already mentioned that this is going to become a really usable open space with many more trees and a variety of native species, the ground and shrubs and the trees, obviously. So I think this is going to enhance the area and give us additional housing, which is much needed. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Just before we move to the stage of voting, as members will be aware, your agendas contain a very detailed case officer report in relation to the application. And we also have our colleague case officer present in the event of any specific questions in relation to its content and who can respond to any issues if required as well. I believe councillor Conception wishes to comment also.
Councillor Conception?
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to ask the officer, in the report, there were two rounds of consultation. And in the earlier round of consultation, both the Environment Agency and United Utilities objected, didn't they? One in relation to the flood risk assessment and United Utilities in relation to the drainage, surface water, et cetera. My issue is relation to sort of the problem that we have not only in parts of West Derby last week, the heavy downfalls. The United Utilities say that the standard is one in 30 years, but we keep getting these, like, floodings on a more regular basis. And I just wanted to know, in terms of others' planning, one of the things that United Utilities have told me is that we need to work together. When I say we, all the different, like, multi-agencies, the Environment Agency, the City Council and United Utilities, because they say it's related to the developments that takes place, the climate and the system that we have. And I just want to be assured that we've got in place, you know, I know there's a condition seven attached to the report that says that, you know, surface water will be connected in such a way that it doesn't go into the drains that we shouldn't go into. But how effective is that? It's just to me, we're not with enough problems for the future because obviously we see across the city, you know, when we have heavy downfalls and rains, we have flooding problems in many areas, particularly in West Derby, but I believe another part of the city as well. How robust is the policy that does have to deal with this? If you could answer that, my friend, thank you.
Sorry, I need to apologise. I need to apologise. I need my case officer in. So I would like him to answer the question and make any other comments he thinks are apposite before we move to the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Stuart Clark, team leader of the South Team. In response, councillor Conception's question, matters of drainage are a very technical area and we rely on our drainage team and the Environment Agency and United Utilities to advise on that. So my knowledge in matters of drainage are not extensive, but what I would refer you to is on page 27 of the report, it does advise that as part of the second round of consultation and further submissions from the applicant and specific drawings are referred to. Both United Utilities and the Environment Agency were happy that those new provisions were sufficient to overcome their concerns and would address any matters of drainage on the sites. This was also concurred with by our own drainage engineers in that respect. And that plan is listed in the approved document on the, on the drawings. So the applicant has to implement that drainage scheme that's been agreed by all those three bodies. And as I've said before, I'm not an expert on that and I have to defer to their knowledge that if they're happy that the information that's been put forward by the applicant is acceptable, then they are happy and confident that will deal with any drainage issues on this particular site. In relation to the, to the remainder of the scheme, Chair, I won't go fully over it again. You had a detailed presentation from the applicant and you've got a detailed report. And we welcome this scheme. We think it's providing a significant uplift to the existing open space. There will be a quantitative net loss, but a significant qualitative gain across the site, including, as you've referred to, a significant biodiversity gain. The dwellings are for affordable rents and shared ownership and the head of highways has no issues in relation to highway safety or, and is happy that there's appropriate levels of off-street parking. And the scheme has been designed in conjunction with ourselves to ensure that there's active engagement by the new dwellings with the open space to maximise public policing, which will allow this space to be used more fully and safely by local residents. And so we're happy to recommend it for approval, Chair, but I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Any further questions?
Don't appear to be any indications, Chair.
So, back to that then, that the recommendation be approved is?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Chair, your vote? Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson is not voting for this item. You're obviously not voting, you've declared an interest. Councillor Cummings? Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Marat? Thank you. And councillor Juarez? Thank you, that's better.
Yeah.
In terms of those members entitled to vote on the application, that is six members able to vote, all six have voted in favour and the application is therefore approved on that basis. We'll now revert to our original running order. The reason for the slight variation was because we have no further speakers for the remaining applications today. So just reverting to our minutes, those of the 2nd of December are set out on pages four to 21. There's been in mind a typographical amendment already applied and published to the minutes insofar as the name of the member who declared an interest at the previous meeting. So that's now corrected to reflect councillor Hanson's declaration. Subjected to that revision, do members have any comments? Or are you happy to agree that? If you agree, please nod clearly for the record. Thank you. As indicated previously, I've got no urgent items, so we now move on immediately to item number six, which, as you'll see on your agenda papers, relates to a site on the grass verge at Long Lane, Liverpool 19, in Cressington Ward. As I alluded to earlier, we don't have any speakers, whether it be agents, applicants or objectors, for this particular application. We do however have our case officer present, so I will display images on screen just to assist and the case officer will summarise for you. Those should be coming on screen now.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, this is an application for 17 and a half metre high telecoms mass 5G. Members will be very familiar with the issues surrounding such applications as we've had quite a few over the last 12 months following the start of the 5G rollout. This is a re-submission of an application that we refused under delegated powers and that was primarily refused because we asked them to consider locating the mast within a sports centre complex where there's taller columns or further away from, from the main road. They hadn't satisfactorily demonstrated that that couldn't be achieved, so the application was refused. They then come back with this application. And it's two and a half metres lower than the one that we refused. And they've also submitted information from the head of sport recreation. It was confirmed that it wouldn't be feasible to locate the mast within the sports centre complex away from the highway for operational reasons. So we're happy now that they've explored all potential opportunities that would minimise any impact from the mast. So we're looking at where they're proposing it now. As you'll see from the, the plans in front of you, it's proposed on the opposite side of the dual carriageway, on the far side away from residential properties, which is, we believe, the optimum location to minimise impact on local residents. It is on the edge of the open space, but it's not in the open space. It's on a grass verge. There's been issues raised about wildlife. However, grass verges in themselves don't really have any significant wildlife benefits other than trees and this wouldn't affect that. Trees will be, there's no impact on trees. As, as normal, we've had significant objection in relation to the health scenario surrounding the 5G technology. Members will also be aware that paragraph 116 of the MPB F makes it clear that it's not for the planning process to impose greater health restrictions or controls on such mass, provided that the appropriate certificate's been submitted, which it has in this particular case. We're therefore of the view, Chair, that given that the reduced height from the original submission and that we've secured or we've got confirmation that there is no better alternative site for this, it's in the best location that we can find to serve the cell that it's due to serve. And that clearly with the mast, there is some visual harm, but that harm is offset by the wider social and economic benefits that the 5G technology rollout is going to deliver. And therefore, we're happy in this occasion to recommend it for approval, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Don't appear to be any, Chair.
Well, Michael, I can't see anybody indicating. So I will move to the vote. Can I move that this recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any comments from members before we can move to votes? No? In which case, Chair, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings? Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Marat? Thank you. Councillor Juarez?
Against.
Thank you. I'll record your dissent by name as well, if I may, councillor Juarez. Thank you. We'll now move on to our final remaining item of business for this year. That is number seven on today's agenda, which relates to a site on Parade Crescent in Liverpool 24, which is the speak Garston area of the city. Similar to our previous item of business, there are no speakers or applicants or agents whether for or against the application. And we do however have our case officer present. So I will again display some images on screen just to assist and take us into the actual application. And once those appear on screen, I'd ask our case officer to comment accordingly. Those will be appearing shortly. Should be coming on your screen now.
Thank you, Mike. And as you'll see from the, from the image on the screen, there's an existing 15 metre high mast that's shown on the location plan in front of you. And this is proposed to move it to the site towards the left adjacent to where former church was. And the existing mast is in quite an exposed location and quite prominent. This will be set against a backdrop of existing established trees, which will go somewhere to filtering views from the wider domain and is in a less exposed area. It is slightly taller, it's five metres taller, but that needs to be because it needs to clear the tree height to get the signal across. But we're satisfied that given this location where there is, there's some element of screening from trees, that this that this increased height is not so significant that it's unacceptable. It's still a good distance away from nearby receptors such as the health centre, residents and the like. And again, it needs to be in this sort of area to serve the cell that it's designed to serve. So in terms of alternative locations, this is considered to be the best location as there's no real extreme tall buildings that could really accommodate it or carry the cell coverage that this would need. Again, as per the previous application, the main objections relate to health. And again, we're unable to consider those in or give any significant weight to those considerations, given the inert certificate's been submitted, which declares that it's within the relevant guidelines for the Commission for Iron Eyes and Radiation. The head of highways has raised no objections to the proposal and the tree office is happy that there's going to be no impact on nearby trees. So we've carefully considered it, Chair, and this will replace one. So it's not an additional one, it will be replacing the other one. And we're happy that in this location, it's the optimum site. And again, as per the previous one, clearly there will be some visual impact. But that impact is outweighed by the benefits that the, you know, five G technology will bring, particularly in more deprived areas such as speed. So we're happy to recommend it for approval, Chair, but happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
There don't appear to be any indications, Chair.
No. Well, in that case, we'll move to the vote. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Are there any comments from members at all? No, in which case, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings. Thank you. Councillor Hanson. Thank you. Councillor Marat. And Councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you. They just, for purposes of clarity, the voting is unanimous and the application is therefore approved on that basis. That concludes today's business. If I can invite the Chair to make some closing remarks as this is our final meeting of the year. Thank you.
Yes, as Mike has said, it's our final meeting. We have had a lot of virtual meetings this year and none of our planning has been held back because people have cooperated so actively to get us here to this point that we've only got three outstanding applications. So well done, everybody. But I must say that I will be making a comment to I G T that since they've upgraded the system, I did get in more quickly, but I'm finding the quality of sound inferior to that we had before. If anybody else has got comments like that or positive ones, would they email me? But finally, I'd like to say, I hope we are all able to have a Christmas that's happy and that we're going to have a much better two thousand and twenty one. So I look forward to welcoming you to our next planning meeting next year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you colleagues for your support and engagement.
Michael, can you hang on for a minute? Do you have a private chat with you?
Will do indeed, thank you. Just to confirm, the live stream of meet proceedings will end unless colleagues have any further comments for the public elements of proceedings. Councillor Conception, did you wish to comment?
I'd like to thank you to yourself, Michael, your committee services, all the officers and all the members, really. I think it's been a difficult year, but one that I think that we've got through really in a good way. And I'd just like to wish everybody a very happy Christmas and a very hopefully ending year. So thank you all.
I'll second that, Tony. Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Conception. Just on behalf of the officers supporting the committee, thank you to members for your patience and understanding during the last few months. As the Chair alluded to, there are additional challenges with holding virtual meetings. So it's very much appreciated for your support and engagement throughout the recent months. And likewise to the head of planning and the planning team leaders and officers from highways and environmental health for your support and cooperation in supporting the virtual meeting process. With those points in mind, thank you to those who've been viewing today's live stream. And likewise, on behalf of the Chair and committee in the council, I wish everyone a happy and safe Christmas and a reminder to everyone to take suitable, safe and sensible precautions to protect your families.